Okay, at six o'clock tonight's meeting in order. We do have like um.
So tonight we have the homeless task force report on our agenda. This was requested by Councilman Gilmore and I believe he and Mr. Henderson will be jointly presenting that.
Well, actually Courtney Cross.
Courtney's gonna drive a bus.
Okay, she's gonna drive a bus and you two are gonna kick it.
There we go.
There we go. So Gary, do you want to introduce?
Yeah, let me say a few words. I'm Gary Henderson, CEO of United Way of Denton County. And first, you're gonna hear me saying, Courtney saying, "Thank you so much for your support. Thank you, Councilman Gilmore, for serving on the homelessness leadership team along with the behavioral health leadership team." Our intent tonight is for Courtney to get into a dialogue with you and bring you up to speed with the work of the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team, that quasi-governmental, countywide entity that's helping us build a system of support and a system of care for those experiencing or suffering from homelessness. So Courtney Cross, come on up. She's our Director of Community Impact Initiatives in our area of homelessness.
Good evening. Is this my clicker? This one should be that one. Yeah. Here we go. I could just talk at you, but might be more between you for you if my slides were.
Eric.
While he's doing that.
In this class.
So if you want to just improvise.
I'm gonna be super excited. I'm gonna use my tablet and keyboard, so.
You can use yours here if you want to.
I'll just be dancing around for ya. Oh, that's fine, I got it. Don't worry.
Got it.
Yep. Good evening, my name is Courtney Cross. I am the Director of Homelessness Initiatives with United Way of Denton County. I do want to say thank you to Councilman Gilmore and to the city of Louisville for championing countywide, system-wide efforts to address homelessness and housing insecurity. I started in my position a little over a year and a half ago, almost two years now, and I think at the time none of us really knew what we were getting into, but we've learned a lot and I hope that we can communicate some of that with you today or this evening. We learned a lot about just homelessness and housing and security needs throughout the county. A lot of what we do is working with providers that can seem Denton-centric sometimes, but every day I try to remind everyone this is a countywide issue and anything we implement and develop needs to be a countywide solution. So we have learned a bit of the difference between the needs of different folks depending on where they are within the county, but today we really just want to communicate what we've been doing for the past year and a half and give you a little bit of an update. So if there's anything you can take away from this presentation tonight, it really is, our desire for you is to understand the collaborative efforts, organizations and individuals throughout the whole of Denton County working tirelessly to build capacity and improve data and really help our community move from a system that maintains homelessness to a community that is able to measurably reach the needle and ensure that homelessness is prevented where possible and if it's not, ensure that it's rare brief and non-occurring experience. If you will hear me say that. It's gonna work, I'm gonna make it work.
Not moving us far ahead, no matter what.
Is there a mouse? Cancel. Ha, I won. Just touch the screen, shut up razor eyes. Head over back.
That's how they do your presentation.
Okay. Should've practiced. Okay, so I'll begin by briefly outlining the structure of the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team. This team operates as a quasi-governmental strategic policymaking body and its appointees bring specific skill sets and backgrounds to this complex and countywide system issue of homelessness. The leadership team consists of appointees from the city of Denton, the city of Louisville, city of Sanger, Denton County Commissioners Court, board members of homelessness and housing service agencies, healthcare providers. We also have representation from higher education, workforce development, and United Way Denton County Board of Directors. And that's Chief Howell out of Denton PD and Sherri McDade with the Denton Housing Authority. The Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team is informed by work groups, as you'll see here, which are composed of our direct service providers, the true experts in their areas, boots-on-the-ground folks who volunteer countless hours to research, vet, and recommend solutions and strategies which we believe will help us achieve our mission of making homelessness rare brief and non-occurring. And this initiative is really built on a collective impact framework, which is a strategy for tackling deep and entrenched, complex social problems. Collective impact is an innovative and structured approach to making collaboration work across government, business, philanthropy, nonprofit organizations, and community volunteers to achieve significant and lasting change. It's more than just collaboration. It's built on five conditions: that stakeholders share a common agenda and a vision for change, establish shared measurements for that change, engage in mutually reinforcing activities, and frequent open communication. I send a lot of emails. Are provided ongoing backbone support to guide these initiatives and build trust and public will in order to mobilize resources. Oops. My god. Okay. This is where I will read directly off the screen. The vision of the Homelessness Leadership Team is that every person in Denton County has a place to call home that is safe, affordable, accessible, and supported by community resources. This is our ongoing vision for, it's meant to be a timeless statement to really communicate our goals now and moving forward. And our mission is to foster an effective and coordinated system of homelessness prevention and intervention resulting in homelessness that is rare brief and non-occurring through community awareness and connection, data-driven, evidence-based, fiscally responsible recommendations, innovative solutions around affordable housing, access to healthcare, inadequate incomes, and coordinated services, and most importantly by mobilizing, advocating, and empowering public-private, community-wide collaboration. That's really cool, I take it over. Nice. So for this portion of the presentation, I'll focus on very briefly on the history and origin of this initiative. In summer of 2015, Mayor Chris Watts of the city of Denton convened a task force to explore the improvement and expansion of housing solutions for people experiencing homelessness in Denton. And this task force then made recommendations to Denton City Council, which resulted in the allocation of the former Denton Animal Shelter to the, that's now known as the Montenegro King Outreach Center. It's one of two emergency shelters in Denton County. And then the second was a coordinator position to support improved access to services and continued oversight of system-wide initiatives to address homelessness. That's me. So the city of Denton identified United Way of Denton County as an ideal agency to house this position given its money-wide reach. United Way hired this position in February 2016. The Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team began in May of 2016 and by the end of the summer of 2016, around July, August, is when we found out our county would not be awarded $600,000 of homelessness prevention and intervention funding, not as the Emergency Solutions Grant or ESG. The Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team was really influential in mobilizing a countywide response to this loss of funding, resulting in nearly $400,000 of stopgap funding. So $200,000 of that came from the city of Denton, 160 directly from the city of Louisville, and then the rest was thrown in by the county Commissioners Court. In the interest of time, I won't go too far into this, but if you have more questions, please feel free to ask. So, the loss of ESG was the result of a number of factors. The two major ones I'll address tonight. The first is really a lack of a diverse housing stock. Denton County's not unique in this. We're seeing it across the nation as cost of living increases, incomes aren't really following suit, it's affecting different communities differently. So we're really seeing the need, kind of that group of folks who are what you're here called one crisis away or a paycheck away from being truly housing insecure. That group is growing. And the second was really a lack of coordinated, community-wide efforts to ensure that individuals or families experiencing a housing crisis are quickly and stably housed. And this is really key because if we can quickly connect an individual or family to housing the first time they experience homelessness, they are significantly less likely to return to homelessness. Our Point in Time Count data, which is an annual survey of people experiencing literal homelessness on the street conducted by community volunteers every year, consistently tells us that the people experiencing homelessness for the first time make up the majority of our literal homeless population in Denton County. Just for some context, it was around 39% in 2016 and then for 2017 it was 42%. You will see our handy-dandy little data visualizations. Our Point in Time Count, it is an annual count. It's required by the federal government and per federal government, they say do it, but they don't really give you many instructions. So it is a largely volunteer-led effort. Agencies that receive federal funding are required to participate, but outside of that, it's a lot of work. So for some more context, counties like Dallas and Tarrant with their kind of more established service areas have pretty hefty multimillion-dollar budgets for the entirety of what we call our housing crisis response system. So for their Point in Time Counts, they're looking at recruiting a thousand volunteers, give or take a few. In Denton County, we're shooting for about 60 to 100. And when you think about, you know, all the geography that we cover, it's, you know, we have to be really strategic about ensuring that we're working collaboratively with law enforcement, governments, every group that kind of is out there and is knowledgeable of where to go and survey people. And what it really is, is it's done in the last week of January of every year with the idea that it's the coldest time of year, so most folks will be accessing shelter anyway. But it's meant to give a snapshot of people experiencing homelessness. So if you were to ask me how many people are homeless in Denton County, I couldn't tell you for certain, but I could tell you that we have a few different data sources that our confidence is growing in to be able to give more of an accurate idea. So every year, we conduct this count. And every year, we have three o'clock presentation with a PowerPoint, and this year we said we're tired of those, we do a lot of PowerPoints. And so we got creative and actually held an exhibit of our pit count data in the Square on Denton. So that's on United Way's Facebook if you want to take a look at it. So the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Teams developed a strategic plan earlier this year, and it seeks to really address both of the issues of a lack of housing and a lack of a coordinated system in a few different ways. We have a housing work group and their strategic goal is to increase access to housing for residents of Denton County by identifying unmet needs, which they seek to do by developing a comprehensive housing inventory, by developing innovative strategies for expanding housing capacity, which we're doing by increasing supportive and additional housing units, as well as, right now, we're implementing some landlord outreach initiatives. So until we have the data to responsibly come back to folks like yourself and other folks throughout the county who would have the ability to throw funding towards, you know, fiscally responsible housing solutions, we're working with what we got and really trying to expand access to existing housing resources. So a lot of that is partnering really closely with our nonprofit housing provider community to really tap into existing units. And really kind of develop a way to compete with just the general housing market. When you've got a handful of different housing providers trying to advocate on behalf of their clients that may have a less than desirable credit or criminal background history, it's kind of easy for those voices to get lost in the shuffle, but if we come forward with a bit more of a unified approach, a uniform approach, we've studied some models in Austin and Boulder and different places like that that have proven that that approach really allows for the nonprofit community to be, you know, a more legitimate competitor. The work group is also working to increase access to housing by fostering housing stability through increased case management capacity and training among housing providers and by influencing public policy and seeking funding to support their strategic objectives. We have a data work group and their strategic goal is to focus, has focused mainly on the continuous improvement of homelessness data management in Denton County. They established this goal in direct alignment with the leadership team's mission to be a data-driven and evidence-based, realizing that in order to do so, we must first, as a community, be able to trust our data and use it effectively to identify and address gaps in our system that keep us from best utilizing community resources and our goal of ensuring homelessness is rare brief and non-occurring.
And just for this slide, just to put this kind of a bow on it, you have people coming into homelessness in all sorts of ways, whether it's abuse, whether it's a paycheck, illness, car breaks down, mental health issues, there's a whole continuum of how people fall into the system. And then you have a whole continuum of service agencies that want to help, and somebody comes up to the desk, and sometimes you get square peg round hole. What they need doesn't quite match what we offer, but we're gonna figure out how to shoehorn you in and at least get a roof over your head. So this coordinated entry system, that CES, is where we've got all of the social service agencies all working off of a unified type of platform and data management style so that we can identify these folks and say, "Okay, you need this specific service," as opposed to, "We're gonna cobble something together for you." And so that's allowing us to take our countywide dollars and actually have more impact. So the old model, you spent money, but did you get people out of homelessness? We would argue not well. This way, by targeting those dollars and really targeting what the issues are around why that person's homeless, now we can get them permanently out of homelessness or for a much longer period of time. But it doesn't happen if you don't have this coordinated entry because nobody's talking to each other. And then you get people that shop the system and we can't stop the shopping, so, because we don't have the data on where they've gone from organization to organization.
So how does a homeless person access that coordinated entry? How does that happen?
I am getting, I will cancel that. Yeah, just one second. Thank you for the segue. Before I get into this, I will say that when you free up the time the providers spend deciding who gets what type of funding and who's eligible for this, that, or the other, which is really key to this process, you allow them to do their job with it more effectively, and that is case manage and provide that support that's truly lacking, because by the time someone gets to a housing provider's door, it's because they've exhausted every other resource that they know and their support system is lacking, it's gone, they've burned bridges, they've just turned every stone that they can. That's really how folks find themselves in a housing crisis, is truly a lack of support. But, so over the past year, the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team's data work group has partnered really closely with the Denton County Homeless Coalition to develop and implement what's called coordinated entry. Simply put, it aims to meet people where they're at, to assess them, assess every person, every household experiencing homelessness based on their need and connect them to the most appropriate housing intervention as quickly as possible. The major benefit of coordinated entry is that it keeps people, like Councilman Gilmore said, who are experiencing homelessness or a housing crisis from bouncing from provider to provider by implementing the use of a common intake and assessment process. The Denton County service providers are able to quickly identify a person's vulnerability and from there, connect them with the most appropriate referral source. I won't get too far into it, but the person's vulnerability is determined by a common assessment tool which gives households a score, factor on an issue such as length of homelessness, mental and physical disabilities, and things of that sort. And these scores are used to make the most appropriate referral and allow providers to prioritize based on community-established guidelines. What this has done, and you'll see on that slide, no, it's not a typo, we have seen an over 1,000% increase in the use of the system in the last year. As of 2016, we had about 27 of these assessments completed in our system. This year, we're up to about 500. And what it really does is help us truly capture the need of people who are experiencing literal homelessness on the street, living out of the car, living in the woods, whatever, in an emergency shelter, whatever it may be. And from there, we have an actual tangible list to where if you ask me today versus this time last year, how many people are experiencing homelessness, I have a pretty decent answer for you as far as people who are scored in a certain way, that would mean that they qualify for services for folks who are literally homeless. So, since you've asked, we have established six front door agencies or entry points to the system. So in an effort to streamline, there's different ways to approach, different models to this approach. Some communities have a single point of entry and they say you gotta go to this one provider to access the system. We know we're a bit more stretched out than that, so we, in an effort to make it most accessible, we've identified six front doors, front doors are entry points. Those are on the next slide, but it's Giving Help Inc. and Denton Christian Community Action is kind of in our next phase because they serve more of the at-risk homeless population. Hearing to Dream Services, their specific clientele, Denton County MHMR from any of their locations can provide this type of access for their, for folks in their facility. Salvation Army Denton, Montenegro King Outreach Center, that's probably a couple I'm forgetting, but we are soon bringing on the Denton Housing Authority and also Salvation Army here in Louisville is coming on very soon. Guess I'll go on that side. So we are attempting to increase access to this process. So on our website and on the Denton County Homeless Coalition's website, it very plainly lists what is coordinated entry, who is it meant for, are you experiencing literal homelessness, what does that mean? And as few words as we could possibly pare it down to, we've identified who those front door agencies are, outlined what folks can expect. And we do have a little disclaimer here because we're very lucky to have providers who do a lot of the work to collect the data, knowing that we don't have resources to meet the need right now. But what this is doing, and as I mentioned before, is giving us the data to mobilize the resources that we know we need. Because I could pull on your heartstrings and tell you, "Let's build this many tiny houses or this kind of community all I want," but unless I come to you with proven data showing the need, it wouldn't be, you know, the most responsible decision for us as a community moving forward.
Courtney, if I could, going back to that $600,000 grant, this was one of our areas of weaknesses. We had not implemented coordinated entry as a community and we weren't effectively using the HMIS system. So comparing a year ago to this year, our application would have ranked in the top mid twenties across the state, which put us just right at the cutoff line for funding, but this year's applications submitted, the pre-score review, put us at number three across the state. So just this work with the leadership team has helped us become more optimistic about our ability to keep that funding in the community.
Yeah. We've become more realistic about how we serve clients, how we serve people experiencing housing crisis. A lot of grant funding, as many of you probably know, is built on numbers, how many are you gonna serve? And so the trap a lot of communities find themselves in is just commit to serving a lot of people, get the grant dollars in, and keep your operations running. It's one of the reasons why we didn't get our funding back, because our numbers weren't matching up quite completely. And so what we did this year, like Gary said, is use the information we have to more realistically commit to housing people. For instance, in our HMIS system right now, we've got nearly 500 people identified or households identified as experiencing literal homelessness. We know a little less, or more or less than about 200 of those folks are qualified for what's called rapid rehousing, which is basically a type of rental assistance that can provide a security deposit and a few months' rent to get them rapidly rehoused, back into housing. And if you divide that out monthly, we can now say we have a need of about 30 households a month who are experiencing literal homelessness and in need of housing. Jump to our Emergency Solutions Grant application and our realistic commitments as a community, we committed to housing about 12 to 14 households a month. So we can realistically say as a community, our gap is probably gonna be anywhere from 12 to 15 households whose needs are still not being met by this grant funding. So how can we go forward and mobilize resources to meet that need?
One of our questions for you tonight, if you look at the bottom of that flyer on the right, with your investment in the homelessness leadership team and with the councilman's participation, could we get permission from you to use your city of Louisville logo along with those other logos on this flyer? Could you just give us permission? It would be great to have you represented on that flyer as well.
You can put that on a future agenda, Gary, for the council to consider. Give some suggestions to that. They can't take that.
Thank you.
So Denton County's coordinated entry process is one that we wish to continuously improve, like any good process, as we increase our coordination of services and access to housing across the county. We plan to increase access by identifying and training additional front doors, as I mentioned. Salvation Army here in Louisville will soon be having on the system targeted, we've identified an agency in Sanger, let alone further north of the county. And we'll soon be trying, bringing those communities on the system as well. Additionally, our next steps really are gonna focus on tracking those referrals. So we capture the need, we're making referrals, that's great. What's happening to them? Are they successfully referred to someone getting housed? Are they still falling, you know, between lost calls and things like that? So that'll really help us to further identify our gaps. We've been able to pull initial numbers, like I mentioned, and our need has been pretty consistent throughout the year. I won't get too far into what this means, but when you think of homelessness, a lot of folks think the guy with the sign on the street, the cardboard sign. And he could have a myriad of needs, kind of thing, but what our data shows us is that of all the people in our community experiencing homelessness, that's really just about 20% is what that number makes up. And really, you've got families and individuals, families who are, who have found themselves just without a place to go, living on the street, or really eligible for diversion services. So that's something else. We're able to use this data to revisit our case management strategies across our housing providers to say, "Okay, if we have this many people who would be well-served by some sort of, some type of mediation, to get them reconnected to their family or get them a bus ticket back home, let's explore those resources and save the rent checks for the folks who are most vulnerable of dying on the street."
Well, we give credit to the board members from the nonprofits that are disfailing in coordinated entry, because they've actually gone back into their boardroom and encouraged their staff to change their intake process. So these six or seven agencies are using the same form, the same intake, so coming into the system looks the same regardless of where you enter into the system.
And by implementing those uniform processes, we're able to start tracking some, what we call, system performance measures that have been adopted by this leadership team. They include total number of people experiencing homelessness, length of time, income levels of family accessing services. If we're helping someone get back into an apartment, are we really helping them sustain that? Are we helping them be connected to either benefits or an adequate source of income that's gonna help them sustain that so they're not back in a year? And tracking these numbers really allows to establish some baseline measurements that to inform strategies moving forward and really set goals to say, how many, you know, what are our goals for how many people we want to see housed? How long is an ideal time for someone to be on our waitlist, if you will, as a community? Because we do have data that tells us the longer they wait, the more vulnerable they are to other issues coming up. Recently, the leadership team, the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team approved the United Way to act as fiscal agent for the Denton County Homeless Coalition. This is key because it allows the homeless coalition, which is primarily a networking body of homeless and housing service providers, it seeks to raise awareness of homelessness and efforts to address homelessness. But this really allows that group, as they're out, as they're visible in the community, as they're pulling their resources to raise awareness and educate the community, to really raise funds on behalf of all the agencies represented to serve clients across the county. So this barriers fund will allow providers to better assist families in crisis to achieve housing stability. It's called a barriers fund because a lot of traditional grant funding is very restricted. So if an agency is receiving a large grant to provide rental assistance, there's really no wiggle room in there for them to help that mom who's got three kids who may have experienced domestic violence get a few extra bucks for gas or have access to childcare for her kids while she's attempting to find some employment and get, bring her family back to stability. Transportation and childcare, late fees are a really big issue if someone has, is struggling with substance use, they've gone to a detox center, they're coming out, they're ready to get back, but they've got some late fees that are taxed on, so whatever bill they left hanging when they went in. Some of these types of funds are really instrumental for people in that situation. And really, like I mentioned before, allow the agencies to ensure that they're helping families implement strategies that will allow them to maintain their housing and not just get into a unit and kind of peace out and let them see how it goes. So the leadership team and the homeless coalition are piloting this fund with the homelessness awareness and panhandling education campaign. Let's see.
We've actually got the Panhandling Education Campaign coming down to the Old Town Main and Mill organization. We're gonna, it's gonna be a guest speaker.
Yeah, we had some success presenting this to Denton's Main Street Association. They know the need, they're very engaged. They kind of begged and pleaded for us to bring to them, "How do we effectively address this?" Because they're seeing an increased presence of folks just in and around their businesses. And so we are on the agenda for Main and Mill Historic District as well to come and just talk with their group and see how we can partner. So additional long-term use for these funds include landlord outreach and efforts to mitigate landlord and property owner risk. So this barrier fund kind of has two legs. One is the Client Assistance Fund. How do we stretch those dollars and really help clients get, maintain their housing? The other is the risk mitigation. So how can we, as I mentioned, as a nonprofit housing provider community, really leverage our resources, do a bit of pre-screening, and come to a landlord that we know, depending on the credit or criminal background of our client, may not be too inclined to house them in one of their units. If we can come to them and say, "Look, we've got a bucket of money here, you're not gonna be left hanging high and dry if there's damages to your unit. We can offer you double security deposit upfront. We can negotiate some type of buy-down. We can negotiate some additional, you know, just an agreement so that you know you've got money here for just in case, Muriel." So really, a way to incentivize housing the folks who, again, are most vulnerable and probably have the most questionable backgrounds that keep them from getting into housing.
Just practically speaking, we can't build our way out of this quickly enough, and we know that with two universities in Denton County, we're competing at a severe market rate with a good-paying customer base. So anything we can do to entice the private landlord to work with our clients, knowing that we're providing supportive services around them. to work with our clients, knowing that we're providing supportive services around them, it's just in our best interest. Somehow we've got to get some of the most at-risk members of our community into housing. And it really changes what we consider success. There was a time where if we could shelter someone overnight during the climate weather, that's success. And that certainly is an important thing to do. But the long-range goal line is moving someone through the state of crisis in their life where they're earning. It could be education, it could be workforce development, it could be behavioral health, but it's moving them to a point where they have the earning power and the stability to keep a job that earns out of wage at our current Denton County market rate.
So we are developing a landlord outreach initiative. We're still launching at our landlord forum in October. This has come up through our Housing Work Group, which has representation, as I mentioned, from throughout the county. We have strategically placed it in Corinth to try and entice our landlord friends from both Denton and Lewisville to come and hear about this new opportunity. And we were able to visit with some folks in Austin who've really successfully implemented this as a way, they had a pretty big initiative to house a lot of the homeless veterans, that are very large, homeless veteran population. And we met this girl named Bree. She's kind of a unicorn, because she's got a background in social work, she's got the people skills for days, and is really good at the motivational interviewing and all that sort of thing. But she grew up, her mom was in real estate. So she's kind of got this sales bone in her as well. And so the same way that we train our social workers and our case managers to work with clients, to, you know, get them from a point of crisis to a point of stability, she, quote-unquote, "case manages landlords", is what she calls it. She's got a working knowledge of all the housing assistance programs available in Austin and Travis County. She's also got a very professional working relationship with the real estate community and is able to quickly and efficiently identify if a landlord calls her and says, I got somebody moving out in 30 days, can you put someone in? She can access the housing priority allows, the same one we have, and she's aware of the programs available in her community and can quickly plug someone within our service provider community into one of those units. So that's what we're working on developing with our providers. So, this is where I say thank you. Your stopgap funding that the City of Lewisville contributed for the loss of ESG was truly impactful. It went to assist 141 unduplicated people, 71 folks in shelter, 46 received what's called homeless prevention, which are really those folks who have an eviction notice in their hand, are on the verge of losing their housing. And as I said before, we know if we can keep someone from becoming homeless, it's much more cost-effective for us as a society, because once they become homeless, there's a whole slew of needs that are then just kind of met by whatever resources are available. And the two rapid rehouse, and this is really key because, as I mentioned earlier, we see a lot more of the homeless prevention need in a community like Lewisville. Denton is really resource-rich. There's soup kitchens, emergency shelters, that sort of thing. So Denton feels a lot more of what's the rapidly, rapid rehousing dollars, the folks who are living in a tent in their car, what have you. But in Lewisville, we see a lot more of the need in regards to folks who are at risk of losing their housing. So we try to keep that in mind as we're building coordinated entry and landlord outreach efforts. How can we build it to fit different types of populations and different hierarchies? In addition to the ESG funding, we also approved $4,000 to go towards our coordinated entry efforts, which, coordinated entry implementation and expansion, which I mentioned, will help us to spend a lot more time down here in Lewisville closely with Salvation Army, other providers. And some other things we do on the backend are really going into church groups and things like that, folks who want to know, where do I send them? How do I help them access the system, this nice credit system you built? Where do they go? So it will allow us to spend a lot more time further south in the county to really experience this process. And then next step, we mentioned we've got our landlord outreach, which will be soon up and running. We're doing a bit of a soft launch at our landlord forum. And so we'd just like to keep an open dialogue with you all, staff and council, in regards to how we can partner with those efforts moving forward. I did a lot of talking. Do you guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
So I want to thank you all for the opportunity to represent the city on this committee. It's been wonderful. United Way has done an outstanding job. And I'm all about, if you could spend a dollar to save our police and our first responders' time and effort to deal with casework and those types of things, we haven't even touched on the mental health component of all of this. But we're finding that these processes are really helping those residents who are most at need, who could become an even greater drain on our city resources. This is a way to put a floor under that, and they're doing a great job.
Just kudos to the homelessness leadership team, those appointed leaders. They're putting a system together that's never really existed before in Denton County. And where nonprofits and hospitals and universities, they all want to work together. They all are siloed. So this is really, for the first time, a connection of a system with data, with the homeless management information system, giving us actionable data that we can come to an organization like you and say, if we build anything next, the next thing we need to build is X, before it was a guess.
And to be perfectly blunt, this is a county-wide issue. It needs to be worked on at the scale of county. And I think by us putting some money in the kitty, quite frankly, we're putting pressure on those county commissioners to start looking at this more specifically, which needs to happen.
We do. We need to see more funding from commissioners, more.
That's all I have.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all for your support.
It's nice that there's a structure. It's something that's been there for such a long time. So many people fall to the crux.
You just feel like you're pouring money into something and now you can measure it.
Absolutely. Now you have measurement.
We'll move forward with the workshop and discussion regular. We'll start with the indication, the Councilman Person, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flag by myself. Then we go into the presentation, then a close session. Do you want to add anything else on this topic tonight?
The close session, I moved to the front because I wanted to talk to you about a couple of issues prior to the public hearing. So it'll be a council decision if you want to do all the items upfront, or if you want to break this into two different sections.
If we can, I might get it all done at one time then. Okay. And we convene, first round of the public hearing, item one.
So this was on your last agenda, and we had continued it to this meeting, but we are asking to continue it to the October 2 meeting.
Any questions?
This means we do not have to, we do not have a public meeting here. We're just going to...
That's correct. Just going to continue it, just like you did at the last meeting.
Do you want to just be continuing the public hearing? Is that what you said?
Yes, that's correct. Just like you did from the last meeting.
I don't remember what we did.
That's what you did.
Take a motion?
Yeah, just make a motion, yes.
Make a motion to close, or just like?
Just to continue, just to continue, specifically to the October 2 meeting.
Okay. Next round of consent agenda, two, three.
The day monument signs finally moving forward. We spent a lot of time on this. Keith shaking his head, yes.
There were two pictures in backup.
That's correct. Yeah, you have one that is designed specifically to be on more narrow medians. And I forget, out of that mix, how many of the narrow?
We are, tonight, two have already been included with the Texas Project. That's FM 407 and State Highway 121. That's a 544. Those are the two narrow versions. And then the update that are going forward are the light version.
Yeah, we had a sightline issue on 407, right?
That's correct. That's normally why we have to go with the more narrow version.
Okay. Item four. And five.
For the drive, moving forward. That's also a very exciting project. Getting that done. It's ready.
Item six.
So this is a new initiative that Stacy's brought to us that certainly dovetails very nicely with our 2025 plan and also with the major project she's working now on, which is the update to your Parkmaster. So she can talk a little bit briefly about that, Mayor, if you'd like.
Right now?
Right.
Mayor, Captain, Park Fence. This is an initiative that is being headed up by the Trust for Public Land and the National Recreation Park Association to try to get cities to commit to having parks within 10-minute walk of every resident. If you look at our dashboard right now, I think we're within 70, we're at 71% of the population is there. And it commits us to, one, looking where, when possible, we need to acquire some new parkland, but also looking where we should make better connections through sidewalks or connections to trails to make it just a little bit shorter walk than it is now, if you have to go out of a cul-de-sac and walk all the way around a neighborhood to a park. It also gives us some opportunities maybe to create some partnerships with LISD or other holders of public land to allow access in places that we might have park deserts. The great thing about being a part of this initiative is the Trust for Public Land is going to give us some tools that have worked in other communities to help bridge that gap, so to speak, without necessarily burdening our maintenance staff or having to go and buy too much more parkland.
Any questions?
I think it's cool. It's a nice objective target to hit.
And the Trust for Public Land is a great organization to be tied to.
Thank you. Now we're down to the regular hearing, item seven. Item eight. Item nine.
So this is your vacant buildings ordinance that you saw a number of months ago. If you would like us to refresh your memory, have a little short PowerPoint that we could walk through with you right now? Mayor, for your question?
Sure. We'll all leave in two minutes till seven.
Regardless of whether we're finished right now.
About a year ago, we came to you, gentlemen, and we proposed a vacant building ordinance. We received some feedback from you guys, and it has taken us a while to work through all the legal issues and to get it all wrapped up exactly the way you guys had requested to do so. So I wanted to go through kind of the details on this. So the goal of the vacant building program is to ensure that vacant buildings are maintained in good condition to a minimum standard of care, to minimize the negative impacts those buildings have on the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And it also allows for tracking and insurance requirements, plan of actions, and property owners would have to designate, what are you going to do with your property? Let's just be mindful of what it is. It could be as little as saying, I'm holding it for investment purposes, but someone needs to tell the city what exactly their plan is. Allows for yearly inspections and improved enforcement. The definition of a vacant building is not necessarily what everyone would think, which is just a vacant property. But the beginning definition is a vacant building is a building or structure that is occupied or is unoccupied or occupied by a person who is without a legal right of occupancy. So if a vagrant is staying in your building, obviously, that's not illegal use. It's still a vacant building, even if someone is camping out inside there. Multi-tenant buildings, we had talked about this, was if you have a, on one lot, many different buildings, let's say the Albertsons parking, the Albertsons tract of land would be a good example. The question was, I think originally was, do we consider you vacant if 75% of the tenants there are gone, or 75% of the total floor area? Well, it didn't really make sense, and council gave us that feedback last time to do the number of tenants. They wanted to, you guys wanted to have percentage, because if you have a bunch of little tiny mom-and-pop shops that are still there, but there's a huge tenant that's absent, well, that's going to have a much bigger impact on the lot than would be the, you know, the little tiny tenants that are in there. So it has to be 75% or more of the total floor area, the buildings are unoccupied. And then the presumption of vacancy is all uses have ceased for 90 days. There are some exceptions to this. And these exceptions build in the incentive for people to do something with their property. So one of them is if the vacant structure has a valid open building permit for construction, remodel, or repair. If, you know, I think, like, for example, Caroline, I think, has had one of her buildings that's being renovated to, I think, a wine bar in Old Town. Well, we're not going to say that's vacant when it's, you know, there's a process going on, and they're trying to work through that. Vacant structures that are actively marketed for sale or leased for less than six months. Vacant structure that is under contract for sale or for lease, and that period of time is six months out. So is there a possibility that someone can game the system? Absolutely. But an example of that would be, we come to you and we say, you haven't had anyone in your building for 90 days. You need to register with the city. But in fact, I could then put it up for lease the next day, and I'm exempt from this. But our intent is to get you doing something with your property. So can someone game the system? Yes. But our hope is to get people looking at properties to do something with it. The general requirements, we're going to, and I won't go into too much detail about it, but basically it's going to require yearly registration, a yearly inspection. They're going to be required to maintain insurance on their property, designate a local agent, so that if we need to get in touch with you, we don't have to call someone in California, we can call someone in the North Texas region. Sign a criminal trespass affidavit with opt-out provisions, and provide a plan of action and maintenance plan for the property. And then what we think is one of the most important things of this ordinance is they have to maintain fire safety systems in working order. So if you have a fire safety system already, we're not going to require you to put a new fire safety system in, but if you have sprinklers already, you have to have them engaged the entire time. And that goes to one of the basic purposes of this ordinance, which is fire protection and safety. If someone fails to register, it's a normal citation process, and that would be $2,000 per day per violation. And if they refuse to allow us to get into their building to do inspections, we would have to go through the warrant process and go to court. What our plan to do is, as soon as this is adopted, we will then send out notices. We have a list of properties that we believe are vacant structures, and we will send out a notice to them, say, get registered within 30 days. Here's our ordinance, a copy of our ordinance. So there's a outreach aspect of this. And then at that point, if they fail to register, we will begin our normal citation process on them. The proposed fees are very low. Our intent is to start low, because this is a new program, and incentivize people to comply with our ordinance. The biggest thing we can do in this ordinance, not just the fire sprinkle aspect, it's for Jackie Davis and the fire inspectors to get information about property owners, be able to have a good contact, be able to get better access to them and compliance. So we're proposing fees for registration. This is a one-time fee of $75. Every year, you will have to update that information, but we're not charging you an extra fee every year. We can change that later on, but this is our first stab at that. Of course, we'll take it back to you guys for any fee changes. Yearly inspections for residential, that's only $25. Yearly re-inspections, if I fail, my home fails inspection, let's say, there's just, I'm storing masses amounts of gasoline in my house and I fail inspection, well, I'll be charged 25 for every reinspection until I fix that problem. And then inspections and reinspection fees for commercial are going to be your normal fire inspection fees. So how that works is fire inspectors go out to every business in the city and they do inspections. But when they go by vacant buildings currently, they just see it's vacant, they look in the window, see if there's any major problems, and they mark it as vacant on their piece of paper, but we don't charge them because we're not going in the building. Here, they're going to be allowed access to the ordinance to be able to enter the building, and that is a full fire inspection, so that it can be charged, like anyone else in the city is a full fire inspection. And that was it.
Okay. Any questions while we're here?
Just one question on the fees that you just talked about. Are you going to be tracking how many hours we're putting to that? So we can, I mean, I know you're basing that on what you think it's going to be, so you can have a tighter range of what we're actually spending, accruing this process.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. We'll keep track of that, as we do with any of our inspections. Do I think that this covers all of our houses? No. But we can revisit that once we gather more data as we see this being applied.
Don't worry, anything, Council. This is a safety issue related to vacant buildings. And we just talked about homelessness. That's, you know, those people sometimes get access to these vacant structures. And it certainly is a big issue to our community. So I think this is a good step in that direction to clean up some of these problems.
Next round is number 10.
Council, remember on this one, this is your tax rate, and whoever makes the motion has to use the exact words that are written in the recommendation. That is state law. So you have to say, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .436886, which is effectively a 4.7654% increase in the tax rate. That has to be the exact motion.
Can I do it? Too much pressure.
I know. State law, don't violate it.
Let's say we're just trying to think they could shame people to not say it, when it's something we have to... to do.
I know. It's somewhat silly, but that is the law.
Okay. Number 11.
This is your fee schedule. These fees were discussed with you during the budget workshop.
12.
Here is your budget for adoption. Oh, these are, no, excuse me. These are the supplemental changes that you've adopted throughout the year. So as you know, at the end of the year, we bring you a separate ordinance that officially adopts all of those supplemental appropriations.
13.
Here is your budget, 17. 18. Seems so simple after so many months of work.
14. And 15. Give us a little background if you've got a minute on this. What are we looking for here?
On 15?
Mm-hmm.
So we are required under state law to actually update your park master plan when you reach that midpoint. And so we would like to have a steering committee appointed that will provide input to the park staff. And so the makeup would be two council members. And then we would actually go to the other boards for appointment. The 4B committee would actually appoint a member, park board would appoint a member. So the council, if we could have them actually appoint two. And Stacy, can you tell us about how many meetings should we look at that?
We have one scheduled meeting on October 11th at 7:30 in the morning that would be important, and that's going to be kind of a visioning entire day through the parks board meeting at night. And then there'll be two or three other meetings in November and probably December that this board or this committee would.
Four or five meetings at the most in the times would be.
Probably at 7:30 in the morning so that we could get it before the workday, but it'll depend on who's appointed, and once we have our first meeting, we'll try to accommodate the majority of this committee.
So we'll think about that when we go out. I have this off two hands. Sounds good. Y'all can work on that. There needs to make the motion when that comes out. And then we'll have the closed session at the first of the meeting. Unless we have to change some of it to the end, there won't be a closed session at the end of the meeting. And then we have reports in the adjournment. Okay? We'll reconvene at 7 o'clock in the council chamber. At 7 o'clock, we'll call tonight's meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. First item of business is the invocation by Councilman Ferguson, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flags by myself.
Praise for a moment of silence and meditation. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible. Okay, next we'll have a presentation, life-saving award to police officers. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate the time tonight to recognize a couple of individuals for a life-saving award. Officers Austin Sly and Timothy O'Hare. Would you join me down front? And I always like to mention that, you know, despite the fact that we do give out recognition awards for things like this, that day in and day out, the men and women of the Louisville Police Department performed a vital public service to all of us, and so we're all safer and a better community for that. But I do want to read the citation for these officers. "In the early morning on June 19th, 2016, officers Austin Sly and Timothy O'Hare were sent to a call where someone reportedly had been stabbed. When the officers arrived, they found a victim who lay bleeding behind a restaurant. Officer Sly immediately began to apply pressure to the injury while Officer O'Hare retrieved a tourniquet to aid Officer Sly. The officers continued to provide medical assistance until Louisville paramedics arrived. Based on their heroic actions, officers Austin Sly and Timothy O'Hare are receiving a life-saving awards. If not for their quick response and immediate actions, this man might not have survived." So on behalf of the City of Louisville and the Louisville Police Department, it is with great pride, I present you both with life-saving awards.
We're proud of you.
I can tell you that much of what we do at work on behalf of our officers can't be done if we don't have the support at home. And so if you guys have family members here, believe me, you should introduce them.
Let me introduce my wife, Lindsay. She's pregnant with my second son, Atlas. My first son, Xander. My sister, Kristen, and my father, Bill.
I've got my mom, Debbie. My wife, Casey Jo. My oldest son, Wyatt. My middle son, Parker, and somewhere back there is my youngest, Cole.
Thank you, families, for supporting these guys. We appreciate the great work that they do day in and day out for you sharing them with us. Thank you so much for that. Congratulations again, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay.
In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations.
Okay. We'll now go into closed session. We'll reconvene the city council. We're down to public hearings, item one. Continue, public hearing.
Yes, Mayor. Move to continue this public hearing to October 2nd, 2017, council meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was, I ran.
Councilman Jones.
Councilman Jones.
All in favor?
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I forgot what we're supposed to do after all that. We're down to Mr. Citizens Forum. Is there anyone to speak?
No.
Okay. We'll go to the next item. Go ahead with the consent agenda.
All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I have no cards.
No cards? Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Troyer, second by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we're down to the regular hearings.
Item seven, consideration of a variance to Section 4-2A to allow temporary sales and marketing trailer at 3256 Lakewood Drive. Lennar Homes is currently developing a single-family detached residential project and is requesting to place a temporary sales and marketing trailer on their site for the purpose of pre-sales before the model home is completed. Recommendations that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the, set forth in the above caption not to exceed 12 months or until the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, whichever occurs first. And we have Wayne Snell, Director of Neighborhood and Inspection Services, available for questions.
Okay. Is there any questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Motion by.
Wait.
I was going to give her who voted for, who made the motion.
I'm just making sure that the motion has that not to exceed 12 months.
Move to approve the variance as set forth, whether not to exceed 12 months until the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or whichever occurs first.
Second.
It's Councilman Jones. Who did I leave the second on that? Okay, Councilman Gilmore? Counselor, you have to do this one, counselor?
Nope.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item eight, consideration of a request for variance to Section 4-2A regarding outdoor receptacles to the, to be located in Lila. Due to limitations of creating permanent structures, a variance is being requested to allow living screen in lieu of the masonry requirements on three sides of the proposed outdoor receptacle. Recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption. And we have Wayne Snell, Director of Neighborhood and Inspection Services, available for questions.
Okay. If there's no question, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Daniels, second by Councilman Troyer. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item nine, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 4 to include an article regulating vacant buildings and an ordinance amending Section 2-201 to adopt associated fees. To better address the risk associated with vacant buildings, staff proposes adopting a vacant building ordinance and a separate ordinance establishing the associated fees. Recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinances as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Second. Okay, a motion by Councilman Ferguson, the second by Councilman Troyer. City attorney.
The first is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending Chapter 4 Buildings and Building Regulations of the Louisville City Code by creating a new article regulating vacant buildings within city limits, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency. The second is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending Chapter 2, Section 2-201, Fee Schedule of the Louisville City Code to add fees relating to vacant buildings, providing for repealer severability, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I want to ask, is there any, any comments? Discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item 10, consideration of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2017-2018 tax rate. This action will adopt the city's annual ad valorem tax rate for all taxable property at 0.436086 per 100 of assessed valuation, while the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2017-2018 is the same as the 2016-2017 tax rate of 0.436086. The proposed tax rate exceeds the effective tax rate of 0.416250. Recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2017-2018 tax rate with the following motion. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.436086, which is effective, effectively a 4.7654% increase in the tax rate.
Okay. Councilman Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.436086, which is effectively a 4.7654% increase in the tax rate.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Did you get those? Okay. Counselor.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, establishing the tax rate and tax levy for the City of Louisville, Texas for the year 2017-2018 upon all taxable property in said city in conformity with the laws of the state of Texas and the charter provisions in all ordinances of said city, providing a repealer severability and effective date and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11.
Item 11, consideration of an ordinance amending Section 2-201 Fee Schedule. These changes include items discussed at the budget workshop held on August 12th as well as newly proposed modifications. Recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. Did you, first, Councilman Ferguson and Brandon? Okay. Counselor.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 2-201 Fee Schedule, with various fees charged by several departments of the city, providing a repealer severability and effective date and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item 12, consideration of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2016-2017 adopted budget. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend the fiscal year 2016-2017 adopted budget to include all supplements and changes approved by council throughout the year. Recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve, as presented.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Ferguson? Counselor.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the previously adopted and approved budget ordinance for the fiscal year October 1st, 2016, to September 30th, 2017, by providing supplemental appropriations to the various funds, providing an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item 13, consideration of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2017-2018 operating budget. Approval of this ordinance adopts an operating budget for all funds beginning October 1st, 2017, and ending September 30th, 2018. Recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Do you have those? Counselor.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, adopting and improving a budget for the City of Louisville, Texas for the year beginning October 1st, 2017, and ending September 30th, 2018, providing for an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item 14, consideration of a variance to Section 2-201 regarding waiver fees, waiving fees associated with the shared table fundraiser and to provide in-kind equipment and staff support. May and Mail Association is requesting a fee waiver expected to total $1,474.72 in connection with the shared table event to be held October 15th in Wayne Ferguson Plaza. Recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as long as funds raised through the event are used for Old Town Public Art or Old Town Marketing Activities and approve providing in-kind marketing support for the event. I have James Kunkie, Communication, Community Relations and Tourism Director, available.
Okay. Any questions?
I also have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I have Sharon Ellis, who is here in support, and I have Carolyn Baron, and, who does not wish to speak, however, she's available for questions.
Okay. Did any of them wish to speak?
No.
No. Okay. Thank you.
I'll speak if you know, if you want to hear something. If y'all want to hear more about it, I'll, we have to stand up.
We may, let me ask them if they have any questions. Okay? Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Can we, here, James? James, did you have a presentation?
No.
No?
I do have a quick question on the invoice. There's a section here on equipment charges. I've got 20 tables at $100 apiece, or 20 tables at 400 dollars. And then I have a 6C comment, but I can't seem to find the comment for 450.
I'd have to access that invoice to answer that for you specifically.
I'd have to access that invoice to answer that for you specifically, Sarah. I don't have that in my hand.
My apologies. And then, I've got a zero for chairs, any quantity of a hundred. So, the expectation is a hundred seats?
Yes, that's correct. And MCL Grand does the billing for that, and in MCL Grand, tables and chairs are packaged together. So, when you see a number for tables, no number for chairs, that's because they are packaged into a single price.
Okay. And do we normally only charge a hundred dollars? What is that, breaking it down, twenty to, five dollars a table?
That is the local nonprofit rate, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Much obliged.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Any entertaining motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, and count, second by Councilman Ferguson?
Can I just clarify, is that a straight approval, or is that with the qualifications that are in the recommendation?
Okay, that would be with the qualifications and recommendations, which, make a motion to approve, the var, the cop, I make a motion to approve, as, as long as the funds raised through the event are used for Old Town Public Art or Old Town Public Marketing Activities, and approve, provide in-kind marketing support for the shared table event.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Thank you for the clarification. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item fifteen, consideration of a resolution appointing two city council members to the park's master plan steering committee. A steering committee will be formed to provide guidance on the update to the park recreation and open space master plan and serve as a conduit of information to stakeholders and other city-appointed boards and commissions. Recommendation is that the city council appoint two council members as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, Pro Tim, Brandon? Jones, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, I, I move to appoint Councilman Troyer and Council, Troyer and Councilman Daniels to the park's master plan steering committee for the purpose of updating the park's recreation and open space master plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a second for, did you get that? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we'll go to reports. Start with you, Nika. Okay, we'll just go down. Okay.
Wanted to remind everybody that this Wednesday night is our first Youth Action Council meeting. It will be at six-thirty in the library in the Bennett Programming Room, which is on the first floor. We posted it, so everyone is welcome to attend.
Thank you.
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay.
The lake level continues to have a rut around the conservation pool.
It's amazing here in September. Yes, anything?
Nothing, Mayor.
Eric? Okay. Eric pointed to you.
Okay, good evening.
Give us the name for the record, please.
David Solomon, city engineer.
Okay.
After I gave a report last council meeting about Valley Ridge ribbon cutting, we discovered that we had a conflict with the date, so a few of the things that I told you last time have changed. Our Valley Ridge ribbon cutting is now scheduled for Monday, October ninth, at ten o'clock in the morning. We're still planning to hold it on Valley Ridge Boulevard immediately east of Keighley, and parking will be available at the Stephen Albacca Center on the northeast corner of the intersection of Keighley and Valley Ridge. In addition, we also changed the date of the closure of Cowan Avenue. We felt that we needed a little bit of additional time to notify residents and businesses and get enough information out, so we have postponed that closure until Thursday, September twenty-eighth. It was originally scheduled for the twenty-first, which would have been this Friday. Variable message boards have already been put out. We've made two separate Everbridge calls to residents and businesses in that neighborhood, and we've also already delivered door hangers to all the residents and businesses in both Spanish and English, and we do have some additional information going out through the city website and social media pages. So, with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Yes, just, could you repeat the time again for the opening of?
It's, it's ten o'clock in the morning on Monday, October ninth.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, sir?
By the looks of Councilman Jones' brand-new cowboy boots, it looks like Western Days is fast approaching. I didn't notice that, yeah. And I'm excited about it, one of my favorite times of the year, so looking forward to, not this weekend, but next.
Okay, that starts on what date?
The twenty-ninth.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So, yes, I am fully prepared this year. I have the boots, I have the hat. I don't have a, an awesome belt buckle like Mr. Ferris has, but I'm working on it. One item I'm very excited about, the Youth Action Council, having met with the, the young people last week, and I know they're pumped up, and, you know, hopefully, maybe we have the next mayor, the next police chief, the next fire chief coming from Louisville High School again. Finally, I want to talk about the dashboard, because I'm super geeked about that. I love the dashboard, I watch it every day. I would suggest to anybody who hasn't visited yet, you go to metrics dot city of Louisville dot com and check it out, it should answer a lot of questions about what's going on with the city. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. TJ?
I just wanted to let Councilman Jones understand that cowboys always had taps on their boots, so you're going to need to get some taps added to those boots, just, and everybody here will vouch for that.
Is that chaps?
No, taps.
Oh, okay.
Chaps are covered, we're all good. But I do want to remind everybody about the library. Sometimes, we start forgetting about the library when it's back to school, but some of the great Wi-Fi mobile hotspots are available. We have several book clubs for adults that are going on. We've got a, programs for free math tutoring, worm composting. I don't know how you compost worms, but they're going to teach you how to do that, or maybe something a little different, and, and various other groups and organizations that meet in the library. So, for those of you who are getting back to school, don't forget, the library has some phenomenal resources, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. MCL Grand, I have several things. KOB Garden Secrets Class on September twenty-first is, the topic is seed saving. Special Abilities of North Texas will have a gala benefit on September twenty-second. Genesis Children's Theater will have their seventh annual black and white cabaret on the twenty-third. Earth and Beyond is a, will have a reception that's for Darren Fagan, who is the artist that created the, what should be the first sculpture donation going into Old Town, that you saw the maquette at the previous council meeting. That'll be on the twenty-third. One twenty, hundred and twenty-fifth birthday celebration of Parma Hansa Yogananda will be September twenty-seventh, that's presented by Kriya Yoga of Dallas, and I will be going to that, by the way. I'm quite familiar with Parma Hansa Yogananda for many years. Louisville Western Days, September twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. Yoga for All at Blue Anju Yoga. Music and Wellness Festival will be October seventh, and of course, yoga in the plaza every Wednesday through October. And then, the one we always like to talk about, Acoustic Jam, every Friday night, presented by the Visual Arts League. And in conjunction with that opening, Earth and Beyond, Darren Fagan Sculptures, under that title, Earth and Beyond, will open in the gallery, main gallery, on September sixteenth, and I believe be there through Western Days and Visual Arts League, has just hung their Artist's Choice exhibit this past week, but officially that opened on September sixteenth in the north corridor, and several people ask, what is Artist's Choice? And the answer is, it's whatever the artist chooses. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Bob, have anything?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor? Patty, thank you very much for filling in tonight with Julie. You did a great job, and anything that you made a mistake on, I caused it, so I'll take the blame for that. Officer, thank you for your service to the community. Thank you. We have a motion to finish up the meeting? Got a second?
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We are adjourned.